Welcome to the Thursday, October 23rd School Committee meeting. We have just returned from executive session. Myself and Diana will be representing the school committee on the bargaining committee as we enter negotiations with Unit A. This time, I'd like to call the meeting to order with a roll call of school committee members. Michelle Kirk be here.
Diana Fraschella here.
Yeah, Bram here.
Will Horn here.
Sophia Viglus here. Thank you.
I'd like to open public input. Members of the public are welcome to comment during the public input either here or through Zoom. If you're on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you keep your camera on when making a Zoom comment and that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. And whether you're here in person or on Zoom, please state your name and address for the record. Public comment? Anybody online?
People online, but no one that their hand raised.
Okay, going once. All right, moving on, onto the consent agenda. This evening, we have the approval of September 11th, 2025 regular meeting minutes, the Medfield High School Student Activity Account, a request for two new sub-accounts, one for the Academic Decathlon and Business Bound, an overnight field trip approval of the MHS Model UN Club going to Brown University from November 14th through 16th, 2025, and donations in the amount of $1,000 from the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation to be deposited into the Medfield High School gift account. This gift was presented as a recognition of MHS varsity head coach Eric Ornberg's selection as Coach of the Week. $2,751.43 from the Wheelock PTO paid directly to the Plymouth Patuxent Museum for the Grade Three Field Trip, and $2,284 from the Memorial PTO paid directly to the amazing hero art performer. Does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda or want anything removed or discussed? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. All right, moving on to new business. We're excited to launch a new approach to our student advisory this year. Will and Sophia have volunteered to co-lead the group, drawing on their extensive experience in secondary education and their ongoing dedication to supporting students. So, Will and Sophia, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So, we met with the student advisors per grade level a few weeks ago, and we talked a little bit about what this will look like and a little bit about how we're hoping some questions we had for them to think about and some of the things that we're hoping that they'll share with the school committee throughout the year. So, I think we're gonna start with grade 12.
Yeah, Athena.
Athena.
Thanks. And Hillary.
And Hillary.
Awesome.
Hi everyone, my name is Sophia. I'm a senior at Michael's School. I'm a student. How cool that they have a new school. I'm Athena Polrenis, and I'm the senior representative of the school committee. So, we understand that there are too many topics that you guys wanted to talk about for the students' feedback with the start time and the cell phone policy. We sent out a people form to the 175 people in our grade, and we asked their opinions on the two subjects.
So, we got 36 responses, which is about 20.5% of the grade. So, we understand that this is a small sample, but we wanted to get other people's thoughts and views rather than just sharing our own. But I do think it's important to realize that since we're seniors, the 7:40 start time was something we were used to. So, we compared. The new start time is being compared to our past experiences. So, the data that we have collected isn't representative of like the general situation of our best students.
With that being said, the first question that we put on our form was, what start time do you prefer? So, the options last year were 7:40, and then this year's 8:35 or no preference. So, 88.9%, which was 32 out of the 36, said that they preferred last year's start time to this year's, and two people said that they liked it better. And two people did say that they did not have a preference.
And then, the second thing we asked was, how has their sleep been affected? 33.3% of the students said they feel less rested, 25 say they feel more rested, and 41.7% say they feel there was no change in their sleep cycle.
There may give a space for the students to share their concerns, to share stuff tonight. So, we consolidated their comments and included our personal thoughts. Many of the students expressed while they appreciated getting sleep, the negative consequences outweighed the benefits in their opinions.
So, the first major topic that was brought up was the loss of extra help and academic support. A major concern is the lack of access to teachers before and after school. One student explains, "We're not allowed to go to extra help before or after school, and I've noticed how this has impacted my learning and grades." Another added, "Not being able to get extra help is disappointing. Now, it has to be at home without a teacher, which eats up more time."
So, the second topic that they brought up was less time for homework, jobs, and activities. So, they consistently said that the later end time has cut into time for homework, sports, and jobs. One wrote, "School gets out an hour later, but there's no change in my extracurricular schedule, meaning I get one hour less to do my homework." Another added, "I cannot work or babysit anymore because I get home after the kids I used to watch, so I have no way to make income." And many also said, "All of my activities got pushed back later. I'm getting home at 9:00 or 10:00 and staying up till 1:00 or 2:00 a.m. doing homework."
And then, the impact of sports and extracurriculars was also a topic that was referenced a lot. So, a swimmer noted, "The swim team can no longer swim at Kingsbury. We now have to go to Canton from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. every day, which is very inconvenient." One student stated their frustration specifically with clubs, saying that no clubs can take place before school, and when they are after school, they interfere with sports. And now, as the teachers don't have to stay, it makes it harder to find advisors and plan meetings. And someone who plays golf said, "I'm being dismissed eight times in six weeks because of daylight that never happened before."
So, the next topic is sleep patterns. Someone said that waking up an hour later is definitely helpful, and they feel less tired, so that was a positive. But many others shared that my sleep has become worse because I have left time after school, and I'm just staying up an hour later doing homework instead of the hour before. And then, one summarized, "Instead of averaging 11:30 p.m., I'm averaging 12:30 a.m." So, it's all been pushed back an hour.
And then, lastly, the 20.5% expressed tiredness. One wrote, "I get home from sports at 7:00, each shower, do homework, study, and I get no time to relax." And another noted, "By 3:00 p.m., when we're still in class, it's hard to give 100% attention. I'm a wreck by the end of the day."
Okay, so that's all we have for the start times. Moving on to the cell phone policy, which definitely had less feedback, but a more positive light. 94.4% of the students said that they are aware of what the policy is and what it includes, and 72.2% said that the cell phone policy had no impact on their ability to focus in class, and the other 27.8% said it helped them. So, a little more positivity on that one.
And one of the feedback that the students gave was, "I understand that not having phones in class is annoying. However, I feel as though without my phone and the distraction of everything on it, I'm able to pay more attention in class and therefore be more attentive and productive." I think the cell phone policy has definitely helped me and my peers.
I think overall, people are annoyed by it, but it's definitely helping them focus.
Yeah. In my opinion, I think putting my phone away and not even having a chance to look at it has definitely been beneficial.
That's been helpful. And we can just close it off now.
Yeah.
That was it. Those are the main concerns. Let us know if you have any questions.
That's a very, like, mature response to recognize, like, "It's annoying, but it's good for me sometimes." And that, sometimes we need that. Can you, for those of us that don't maybe aren't as familiar with what the after-school help looked like in the high school beforehand?
Oh, yeah.
Can you just explain, like, because when you say, like, "Now teachers aren't after school," can you explain what that means? Like, what the difference is?
I think the way that we structured the new start time was that teachers have their time in school, because I know that you got, like, teachers have set times where they have to be in school and then times where they can leave, and their time goes to 3:10 now. So, instead of them being after school, which sometimes was used as extra help, I remember on some teachers' boards, they'd put Tuesday, Thursday, "I can be after school because I don't have meetings," because they had to be after school till, I think, 2:45. So, instead of that 2:07 to 2:45 So, instead of that 2:07 to 2:45 time on maybe Tuesday and Thursday, there's none.
You felt like you could get help from any teacher after-school pretty easily?
Because sometimes, I think people liked it a lot, because I know we have Flex, so you're like, "Well, why don't you just use Flex?" Sometimes people have multiple tests and stuff. So, if I went to Flex for math, but I also have an English test, I would probably go to Flex for math and then go to after-school for English. So, I think, like, because we take so many classes, it was helpful to have that for school.
And I think also with Flex, now that there's no after-school, Flexes are extremely crowded this year. So, you can't really work with a teacher one-on-one or individually because there's so many students.
It feels more crowded than it was last year.
After-school was definitely more one-on-one.
Yeah, after-school, I feel like I could have met with any teacher, asked them specific questions. Now, I can email them, but they might not be checking their emails often, so.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to go next and just go right down? Is that what we're trying to do?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Elliot Liang, and I am the representative for the Class of 2027. And I just wanted to start off with what we've done in our meeting so far regarding prom. And we have sent out a survey regarding the prom theme and have gotten some responses of a '90s techno rave, a tangled theme, "Under the Sea," "Class Royale," or "Renaissance." And some special ideas people had were a photo booth, red carpet, or even some playing cards. And we've also sent a reminder to pay our class dues and to overall raise money for prom. And we've come up with some fundraiser ideas with a raffle at a bake sale that we might hold at Wheelock or at the Thanksgiving football game with possible items including Mr. Scott's golf shirts, local business gift cards. And we also plan to have a car wash in the spring due to there being so many in the fall, due to fall sports. And we also plan to possibly raffle out a parking spot for the junior lot, which could be cheap, but it's usually, like, there's high demand amongst the students, especially with more juniors having licenses second semester. And we also plan to sell hot chocolate or work with the food shack during fall sports playoff games if possible. And there's also a notion to sell class-year t-shirts to kindergarteners that the parents might like. And we, currently, we have already done our Tape a T-Shirt fundraiser with Mr. Ormberg and have raised around $275, which was decent. And feedback, some people said it was too expensive for a piece of tape, and some said they would have paid for it if it was a different teacher. And what we hope to accomplish in the future is to go to Lake Pearl, which is our prom venue, and get a sense of the cost venue and what happens for rain or other food options. And we want to incorporate more student voice in these considerations and try to run routine surveys if possible. And if the school committee has anything they would like us to, like, ask about, then we can also incorporate that. And general peer comments regarding start times. I've heard that some people believe that it helps force people manage their time more wisely and strive to go to bed at a similar time as before, which in turn does increase their sleep with a later start time. However, some other people also believe that because of sports and other extracurricular activities, which is all being shifted further due to the start time, this pushes their nights just later, and they have to finish the work that they would have done before, as Hillary and Athena have said before. And also, the issue regarding extra help is not available, and it's becoming difficult to manage time as during Flex, sometimes there are, like, for example, honors band rehearsals happen during then, and also there are sometimes like captains meetings or sports meetings. And we've also gotten feedback regarding homecoming, and people have wanted to see the situation regarding this and if there's a possibility of bringing it back in the future.
Are you bringing what back?
Homecoming.
You don't have homecoming? I don't have, I did not know. Was it?
It's taken away, it was just not happening.
Like, 15 years ago?
Yeah.
Okay, so this isn't like a new, okay. Well, I didn't know if it was like this, this class, and like this. Yeah. I was like, I didn't know.
How much did you guys charge for a piece of tape?
We charged $3 for one strip and $5 for two strips.
How long did the teacher have to be taped to the wall?
Yeah, can you, can you explain what that means?
So, across our four lunch periods, we did this fundraiser in the caf and had, like, Mr. Mason announce it to all the students. And over time, as the lunches passed and the tape accumulated, he would eventually hang on the wall, because there were seats under him, but we took them out as the tape, like, got better, just, yeah. Yes, because of World Cup at Joliet.
Lake Pearl is very nice. It is nice. It is really nice.
Elliot, I have a question about, did you say that the, like, sports meetings are held during Flex time?
Captain's.
Captain's meetings. Like, there was a captain's meeting before.
Okay. And it would be totally excusable to miss that meeting if you wanted to go to academics, just like practice after-school, right?
I'm not sure about that.
Okay, let's make sure, like, okay.
Yeah.
All right. What's that?
We're getting nods, and it seems like, yes, you do. Yeah, it's probably more of a, like, a social pressure or feeling, like, I'd rather go to that, too, right?
All right, that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Elliot.
Lily. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lily Patton, I'm the 2028 sophomore representative. The first thing I'd like to speak about is our class fundraiser planning. So far, government has only met once, and we started to talk about a fundraiser around the holidays. This would be, like, inclusive to all holidays, and we are having another meeting next Friday, and we'll continue to plan out our ideas. Another thing I'd like to speak about is the loss of EPT time. This stands for Extended Passing Time. Last year, after first and second block, students were able to, like, grab a snack in the cafeteria or hang out and, like, hang out, like, just around school, and this kind of, like, broke up the day. This year, because of the new scheduling, we no longer have EPT, and this has just been, like, a frequent thing my peers have been talking about around school, that they miss having this time. Another thing, talking about scheduling, is over the past couple of weeks, I think everyone is, like, adjusting to the start time and kind of accepting that you're ending the day later and, like, it's just kind of, it is what it is now. And I think it's, like, varying from person to person if you enjoy, like, waking up later, and it just kind of, everyone has their own opinion on it. But a big thing is probably the traffic coming to and from school. Yeah. And then, last thing I'd like to talk about is the cell phone policies. A newer policy we have is leaving our phones in Flex before leaving Flex. I feel as though teachers have been doing a good job at enforcing this new policy, and it has worked out well. This is when you're leaving Flex, you're told to put your phone in the phone caddy to, like, limit any cell phones in the hallways during Flex time. So, yeah.
How long was EPT before?
Pretty sure it's 10 minutes.
I think it's five minutes of pass time, but that's an extra five minutes.
When you said the phone thing, Lily, for the, so, during Flex, do you have, like, advisory, like, a place you're supposed to check in, and you leave the phone there, and then you go get extra help? Sorry, you just lost me when you said the phones stay in Flex.
Yeah, so you can sign up for any Flex. Besides, on a day one, you are locked into your advisory for just Flex A. But besides that, you can sign up on My Flex Learning for any place you want to go to, like, meet with a teacher. It's just when you're in that Flex, and then you go and leave to go to the bathroom or fill up a water bottle, then you have to leave your phone in the caddy to just limit any cell phones, like, used in the hallways.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense.
Thanks, Lily. Thanks, Lily. Hillary, you're up.
Hi, everyone, my name's Hillary DeShays, and I'm the freshman representative to school committee. I recently went through a big jump from eighth to ninth grade, and today I want to focus on that transition. I dive into some details about what experiences was like for me, and I also share some thoughts and feedback from my peers and how we felt during this change. Mrs. Hagan hosted a meeting with about 30 kids from my grade, and we talked about the transition and how the transition is going. We got one person from each advisory who we thought would benefit and talked about how everyone was feeling. Some of the key aspects in this was talking about how sixth grade was fairly easy and then seventh grade really hard, and then eighth grade was just easy again. So, it wasn't like, people would have rather had, like, stair steps going up into freshman year, but it was more, like, rocky and uneven. I would also say that the homework, eighth grade, we barely had any homework and just like the jump, like, you could, like, miss an assignment and the teacher, like, you wouldn't get counted for, like, every, little things would just slide like that. Also, I would say that the middle, like, everyone's still trying to adjust, and the teachers understand, but they're, like, expect us to be ready into it. And also, if we don't understand what we're learning, they're not really, like, they're like, "Oh, like, you didn't learn this," and they just get really confused about that. I would also say that, like, just, like, eighth grade science was really easy, and bio was a big jump, and everyone is talking about that, just, like, trying to figure out how that jump is going for them. And I would also talk about how, like, the grading. Middle schoolers were, like, really not prepared to, like, they used to think, like, 80 or above was a four, anything, anything could really slide, and now, like, it is really hard to get an A, and people just don't understand that. And I would also say, just like the switches from each classes, like, didn't really, eighth grade really didn't prepare you as much as people would have liked, and people were really vocal about that. Also, people mentioned friends in other school systems seemed more prepared for high school, and that was a big topic about how each school, like, how the different learning is just taking place. And, yeah. I would also say, like, the jump, like, it was also helpful, like, all the things that we got before, like, all the things, like, all the strengths that we got given to, like, just transitioning. Like, I really think that we got planners from one of them, and that was really helpful to just keep track of everything. And also, Flex is really helpful, that's, like, a bunch of new. But I would also say that not in eighth grade, we did have, we could go before or after-school to get extra help, and this year we cannot, which is a big, also, change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, at the end there, Elliot, were you sneaking in some of the, some good things, or, like, planners in Flex?
Yeah, I would say, like, planners, like, we didn't get Flex last year, like, or, like, that time to just meet with their teachers. And this year, like, we get to, like, experience that, which is completely new. And the planners were really helpful because we got to, like, it was a way of organizing that we didn't have in middle school.
Is there anything else that they've done at the high school to help you with the transition that you've noticed?
I would say, like, just like the meetings, like, towards the end of eighth grade, we met with a bunch of the teachers and the student council and student government. They, like, talked all about that, like, the transition. If we had any questions, they would also come in our advisories and talk about it.
Was that helpful?
Yeah. Like, just, like, getting.
Be like next year, or when you were going into ninth grade.
And, and you said in eighth grade, you barely got homework in eighth grade.
Yeah.
And in ninth grade, you're getting a lot of homework, I assume? Do you think you and your fellow ninth graders would love to have a lot more homework in eighth grade?
I would say, like, some people, like, not a lot, but just, like, enough to prepare you till it's not, like, how big the jump is. Because, like, last year, it was, like, probably 20 minutes, like, or, like, you could just finish it in school. And now, it's, like, people say, like, one to two hours every night. And then, also with sports.
Say total, or 20 minutes total, you'd say?
Like, yeah, total.
Do you feel like, aside from, like, the workload, right? So, like, the homework after-school feels like more, like, that I get. But the, the content, do you feel like you're, when you're in class, do you feel like you're, like, "I have no, like, I don't know what's happening"?
Yeah.
Or do you feel like, "I know what's happening," and there's just a lot?
I would say, like, it can be both, because, like, some people, like, get it, or, like, depending on also what class they took last year, like, some people get it, and some people, it's just, like, like, and the teachers expect you to know it, but, like, some people, we just don't. Like, we never learned it, and, but some, like, it depended on the cluster, too. Some clusters taught certain things, and the others didn't.
Thank you, and thank you, thank you for letting us ask you these questions. And Hillary, Athena, that was, I mean, the most data-driven presentation I think we've had from kids. So, I appreciate it, and I appreciate you letting us ask you these questions, and all we want is for you to be honest. So, we appreciate you guys, because this is a lot better for us when you guys are this engaged, and the more you share with us, the better, and hopefully, the better we can all work together to make this school. So, I appreciate you, and I don't, half apologizing for putting you on the spot, but I appreciate you answering the questions.
Of course.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
All right, we will move on to the next topic, which is the eighth-grade trip to Washington DC.
Mr. Ron. Hello. Thanks for having me. So, hopefully, I think you all got a copy of the formal request for the trip, and happy to answer any questions. I also brought a copy of, this is just. I'll save it for Mike, but it's a copy of the flyer that has, like, some of the talking points about the trip. Thank you. You're welcome. So, this trip has been an annual trip long before I came, so it's definitely, since probably the 80s, it's been going on. The only time that we have not had the trip was to Washington DC was 2002, which was after 9/11, when they made a trip to Canada and did a different, different sightseeing. And then, the 2020 through 2022, we did not go because of COVID. And we resumed the trip in 2023. I have statistics on the percentage of kids that go. Typically, it's about 94% to 97% of the kids that go. We do have plans in place for financial support for the trip. This year's trip is $1,535 per student. And if approved, we will have an informational webinar next week with all families and share all the information, and then with the payment plans and how that will go forward. As you know, this has been a real big piece of our work, not just at Blake, but as the DEIB committee, about the cost of Medfield experience and really trying to work with systems and working with Dr. Mars and Mr. LaFresca and our PTOs, organizations to think about long-term funding, because this is the most expensive class trip pre-K through 12, starts of school experience. We did switch last year to a different tour company, because had we stayed with World Strides, last year's trip would have been $2,100. It went with Grand Classroom, which, you know, we had some bumps along the way last year, but I would say they're no different than bumps we've had in the past with, we're gonna have a bus breakdown, we're gonna have some issues. We're traveling with 200 students and about 20 adults. So, and we have to sometimes remind the students and families that, think about when you're traveling on a family trip of five, how many issues come up? We're gonna have some issues. But overall, the trip went really well. Chaperones were great, and the itinerary that we're planning is very similar. We're, on Tuesday morning, we leave early, stop in New York City for kind of a whirlwind tour of New York City, see the 9/11 memorial, take, do a quick walking tour of Wall Street, go by Hamilton's, where he's buried. Yep, Trinity Church, we will see the bowl, and I won't talk about the details of the pictures that the kids like to take around the bowl. And then, we will then take a ferry over to Liberty Island, Statue of Liberty, and then take the ferry from there to New Jersey and head on down to DC. And then, the, we'll hit the different sites throughout the week and memorials. And then, Friday morning, our last stop is at the Capitol, where we'll do a photo shot of the grade, and then we head on back. The cost of the trip is all-inclusive. It provides enough for meal allotments, all, all housing, everything. Yes, kids, well, they say, "Should we bring money, souvenirs?" Yeah, and we make sure we stop at a souvenir shop along the way. Some kids love to buy more food and more gifts, and that's great, too. So, that's the hope. I do want to just share that we've been in touch with Grand Classroom and the owner or the president of the organization and asking a lot of questions about potential impact on government shutdown. How has that been happening? Who knows? I'm not saying it will happen in the spring. We have noticed last year, even prior to the year before, there's definitely an increased number of protests going on. And security's tight. It's really tight, and in some ways, that's very reassuring. And I would say what we've found is more, a little bit longer lines at some, like, getting into Arlington National Cemetery because of staffing. What Greg shared, and I printed out, he said, "In terms of government shutdown issues, we have groups in DC right now. Each trip going on has a few alternative versions of plans authored to ensure smooth trips in DC. They have not broken stride with their current trips, aside from being prepared, and they're running successfully with alternate sites planned in partnership with the trip leaders." So, I think what we will do is we start, I mean, we we've had some preliminary phone calls, starting in January, we have almost every other week, phone call with them and working with the chaperones as we move along. So hopefully, with your approval, we'll be able to go this year. I don't know if there's any key piece I haven't talked about, or any piece of information you want to ask about?
Do you have any examples of like what some of those, in the event that part of the, there had to be a pivot while you were on the trip, right? Like, I recognize that the tour company is gonna be helping in that space. Were they, did they give any examples of what like a pivot might look like?
So I, I would say, in general, so right now, the, the sites, there are no sites that have been shut down. I think a lot of the pivoting is no different than if there's a memorial and they have kind of scout pieces, let's do a different set of memorials, the same way we would pivot with weather.
Okay.
And I think that's part of that piece. And thinking about, there's so much to see in DC, we don't get to see all of them anyway. I mean, so I would say like, if certain memorials might feel one way, we've, the Pentagon Memorial, we could spend a lot of time there. The Air Force Memorial, we don't always get a chance to see. So I think that's part of it. And to be frank, we haven't gotten into too many details about that because we wanted to wait until if there was approval of the trip.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Um, last year, I think you guys stayed near the airport?
We did.
Is that gonna be the same for this year?
That is the plan. And one of the challenges we had with last year is we had a bus driver that got lost, which was not ideal. That has happened before, I'll say, and I had to like remind some people about that. It's not, not great, but, so that was a glitch. The other thing that is a challenge, which is wonderful, that parents can stay in touch with their kids very frequently. But, you know, I'm getting emails on the bus ride down, why are you taking this exit versus this exit? It's like, yikes. I mean, I'm just being frank, like, that's the type of piece of the awareness, which is great, blessing and a curse. Kids are texting their parents, you know, I thought they said they were taking this exit. It's like, hey. But that's a, that's a reality. So I think in that way, the piece about that is, it is, it makes for a little bit of a shorter trip down.
Okay.
And it's really easy to go in. One of the challenges of the hotel, it, it's a, their, the services they provide were better than any hotel we've stayed at. The meals and the chef and their crew were incredibly accommodating for our students, more so than we've ever had on the twelve years I've gone on the trip. Because that can be a real challenge. And we want to make sure that all the dietary needs are in place and the hotel's response was better. What was a big challenge, it's a very spread out hotel. And just the way the room numbers were, it was confusing. So the first night arrival was rough.
Yeah.
And kids got to bed pretty late. And typically, I mean, that sometimes may happen. But that is the plan to stay there. We also are switching, we're able to, hopefully, if the trip, you know, pre, pre-approved or agreed upon, is Yankee bus lines, which will be a better bus line. It's more expensive, but it is worth the investment from our experience.
And then understanding just with the way the world and the, and the DC area is operating right now, if a family, so parents and families can obviously opt themselves into the trip.
Hundred percent.
What's the latest that somebody could opt themselves out if something, if they were just themselves or the child were feeling uncomfortable?
And this will be shared with all families is, we have, right now, as a school, it's like, part of the cost is the limited insurance, which means X number of days, if it's, I'm making up the numbers, something like seventy days before the trip, sixty days before the trip, if we cancel, X amount of percentage goes back to all. As it gets closer, it depends. Families have the option for insurance, all the packages. And that is similar to what we've done in past years. The one year where we built the cost of insurance end was the twenty twenty-three year, because that was the first year after COVID. And there's things were really up in the air still about whether going. And we built that cost into everyone's trip. If we built that into everyone, it would be closer to a nineteen hundred dollar trip. So I think what we, our decision was, let's leave that as an option for families.
But families can do that themselves?
Families can opt in on all those levels. Also, I do want to be very clear that cost, we hope, is never a factor.
Right.
That whatever the needs are, whether it's full, partial, delayed, and we do not ask for reasons why. And that's a piece, each year, the cost of scholarship is about thirty thousand dollars, which aligns with our percentages. I mean, it really does, when we think about the number of students that we have each year and doing that. And I do want to thank again, from last year, which is gonna help our scholarship fund this year, last year, the veterans in town donated ten thousand dollars towards our scholarship fund, and the Lions six thousand dollars, which was incredible. And we have a very, very generous community here, that some families will pay for double trips, just add more in, or if there's a refund, they say, you know what, contribute to that scholarship fund, which we also recognize we can't rely on that. And that's where the systems we want to build in.
Yeah.
So, so that's the hope, that I recognize it's a lot that for families to ask, but we hope that there's avenues for that.
Do you guys have any other questions?
Yeah, I'm curious of that. What kind of systems would you build in to help self-support of like, just an add-on to the base, or?
So different things that, I mean, yep, there's always a little factor, which happens with most field trips, we add on a percentage, really is thinking about, I think, being more intentional about looking maybe some corporate help in different places. I know some of my colleagues, they do that. We've had ideas where, with a company, if they donated a certain amount of money, or Middlesex Savings or something, if we got the drawstring bags and put Middlesex Savings on the back. Something like that is a piece. I would say the PTOs have been really, K eight PTO and RPTO have been working together to think about kind of class funding that would go up with the class, starting at a younger age. Some ideas that have come up is the challenge is saying, well, could we defray the cost over three years? The challenge is, as you know, it has to be approved each year. So like, that's an assumption to say in sixth grade to pay off five hundred dollars this year, five hundred, five to break it up. I think that's a challenge to do, because it is an annual trip. And, you know, yes, if the funds are raised as it goes along, if the trip doesn't get approved, that would carry with that class into high school, if that makes sense. Any other questions or things I haven't talked about?
Just about the trip, I just saw some of the, the faces of like, when you talked about New York. Is that a new thing?
Nope.
That you're going to New York? Oh, okay. Okay, that's why. Oh, you were, okay, that's why. I, I thought I saw, I was like, wait, is that different?
My question about that is like, is this what Grand Classroom recommends? I feel like throwing in the New York is like a lot on DC. Like, I, I, I wonder why you don't just go to DC and just spend the time there. Like, is it, do they recommend that stop?
That's not Grand Classroom. I mean, and so-
Or like what, whoever puts these tours together?
Yeah, I mean, that's really with us together. And to be frank, when I, and I mean, Robert, I think you guys did that, right? On the way down? Did you stop in New York? Oh, you didn't? You just went straight down. Also, they used to fly sometimes.
Yeah. And that's the other thing. Do they ever, they, do they price out the difference between-
Yep, we do.
Lights and the buses, because?
Yep. What I'll say is, it's more expensive to fly. The other factors are, I, knowing this, what we bring in accessibility for all students, flying would be a whole nother set of layers. With making sure that we are accommodating for all the students' needs, we have students with mental health, anxiety, that is a factor that we know. Also, the fact that if a plane gets delayed or canceled, as it's going on right now, we're stuck. That's not the case with the buses. And that is a challenge. And on the timing and going through, a lot of the schools, more schools that are doing that are doing over a three-day trip, which is something to consider. I think the trade-off in that, from looking at our staff and planning, we feel like this gets more out of it. It is a, the stop in New York, I think it's, it's a great experience. I really do. I mean, and it is a whirlwind. I wish we had more time. Sometimes traffic going in is hard.
I just feel like, exactly.
That can be.
The amount of time you can actually spend there, or is it like, right, is it feel rushed?
Yep.
You might as well just spend the extra four hours in DC.
Yeah. But the reality is, if we went down to DC, we get there now like nine thirty or ten, we would get there about six. We, really, that's maybe a couple memorials at best.
You could go to bed at a normal time.
You might get stuck in the loop.
Yep. But what I, what I will say is, that was just a day of travel.
Yep.
And on a level, I get that it's a smaller piece. It's, it's similar, we've gotten feedback sometimes from staff saying that, let's just wake up Friday morning and go home. I have a real hard time with that when families have paid, we've stayed for a night, and that's a, that adds on a lot to the cost and we got nothing out of it. You know, it's, it's, it's a challenge. And I get it, it's a trade-off.
My eighth grader spoke highly of it.
Yeah, I think the New York part looks cool. All right, anything else? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the eighth grade trip to Washington DC, May nineteenth through twenty-second, two thousand twenty-six.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Passes. Congrats.
That's wonderful. I'll send out the info to families tomorrow about the webinar.
Okay.
So thanks so much.
All right, moving on to the secondary principal's opening report.
I'll be right there. Yeah. Go to it.
Yeah.
Good evening. How are you?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you guys so much.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great job.
And I will say, as somebody who lived that DC trip through the airport, getting two hundred middle schoolers through security is, takes quite a long time. So I, yeah, I think the bus is a lot better. You actually don't end up saving much time because you do have to get to the airport so much earlier to get everyone through. So anyway, just wanted to note that, yeah. Great trip, but the airport part of it, yeah, not so much. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. It's my pleasure to, to present to you the opening of school here at Medfield High School. We are well into our school year with the next quarter beginning in about a week or so. So we're almost a quarter of the way through. I want to thank our custodial staff for getting the building ready for the school year. Our new head custodian, Ryan Spence, has been a great addition to our staff. And I want to thank Ryan and his team for getting the building ready. We had a good opening this year. Enrollment on October first was seven hundred and seventeen students, which is a little bit more than a year ago. As tradition dictates, our seniors embarked on their annual cruise through Boston, their senior cruise to start the year. This event fosters camaraderie and creates lasting memories for our graduating class. As always, many of our seniors end up saying that that ended up being one of the highlights of the school year for them. Speaking of our seniors, they've been busy this fall. Many helped to plan our Spirit Week and pep rally, which took place a couple of weeks ago. And of course, many of our seniors are knee-deep in the college application process right now, with many November one application deadlines nearing us. So I know that they are very busy with that. This year, we rolled out a few new courses. Here at MHS, we're now offering college-level statistics for the first time. And two new courses that blend our art and business departments, we're excited about this one. In art, the students taking visual marketing will be working collaboratively with our business students, who are enrolled in advertising and marketing too. So this interdisciplinary venture will provide our students with a real business and marketing experience. These courses will run simultaneously, which will allow the students in either class to work together on certain projects throughout the semester. So this one is new for us, and we'll kick it off in the second semester. So we haven't started yet. But we have our business teacher, Ms. Schaefer, and one of our art teachers co-teaching this. And we're excited for this neat learning opportunity for our students. We just completed our teacher conferences with parents last week. This is the third year of offering parent conferences. This fall, we had three hundred and twenty-one parents participate, so just shy of half of our families, for a total of one thousand two hundred and forty-seven conferences, which seems like a lot, when you think about these conferences happening over the course of just two afternoons. We actually had a few in the morning this year for the first time. And our next round of conferences, conferences will take place in March. Things are starting to settle now with the new start time. Some of the busing challenges that we experienced early on have seemed to have settled. The students and staff appear to be, have adjusted to the new times as well. A few early observations, and we'll certainly continue to monitor these throughout the year. We've seen a slight decrease in the number of tardies compared to this time of year, the last couple of years. So that's been good. And just to note, our master's schedule hasn't changed for this year. For the most part, obviously, the times have changed because we're starting an hour late. But in general, the rotations, flex, things of that nature have remained in place. We have received some inquiries regarding support for students now that the after-school piece has been removed. I know we've heard about that tonight. Since we've incorporated flex into our schedule several years ago, we've seen a significant decrease in the number of students accessing after-school help prior to this year. This year, student support is done during flex. Just as a reminder, our schedule includes three and a half to four and a half hours a week of flex, which consists of about seven to nine flex times over the course of a five-day week. It varies with our rotating schedule, but that's about the average. As I noted earlier, over the past couple of years, we have observed, like I said, a decrease in the amount of students that were staying after school. So far, you know, this year, our flexes haven't quite filled. We have data with MyFlexLearning that shows how often flexes are filling up, and it doesn't happen a lot. Certainly, there is more, there are more students in class during flex, but students still have access to their, their teachers. Yep.
To find flexing filling up, like, what is the part that's-
So typically, a teacher will have about twenty-four slots to fill up in their class for extra help, yeah, during flex, yeah. And most of the time, it's about half that. Some are, definitely, definitely get busier, but very few actually fill up. So when they fill up, you can't actually jump into it anymore. So a student can't even sign into it. So we haven't seen a whole lot of that quite yet. Last week, our LINK tutoring program began. I know I mentioned that, I don't know if it was last year, maybe the year before. So our LINK tutoring program allows students to get additional support in some of their classes during flex. So we have students who are trained as tutors, who are assigned teachers throughout the building, to provide additional support during flex. So that just started last week. We also continue to offer peer tutors. Students can schedule these tutoring sessions through the Guidance Office. And these sessions take place immediately after school. Our guidance counselors organize this. So we'll closely monitor the student support during the transition to these new times. We're committed to making sure every student has the resources that they need to be successful. Dr. Marsden and I have discussed this, and you know, we're just gonna monitor it throughout the year to make sure that the needs of our students are being met. Other, other new items this year include the Wayfinder SEL program that we've now incorporated into our advisory meetings, and of course, Parent Square. That has provided us a great opportunity to share information with our families. To date, there have been about two hundred posts from teachers and the administrators that have gone out to families. The other important number is that so far, two hundred and eighty-nine families have engaged with Parent Square posts that we've put out, which is great. It tells us that they're looking at them, they're reading the posts, they're, you know, getting back to us. I'm happy to share that starting next week, we'll be introducing Student Square to our students. And it is what it sounds like, it's Parent Square for students. This will give us an opportunity to better interact and share with our students. It's important to note that, you know, we're obviously still in the stages, early stages with Parent Square, but so far, it appears to be improving our communication. Finally, in the area of student activities, our fall musical is underway. Mama Mia is this year's musical, which will take place on November twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third. So we hope you can join us there. I know there was a mention of clubs. We actually have more clubs right now than we've ever had. We have fifty-five clubs that are running right now, and they run right after school. And seven of our, all seven of our fall varsity sports are on pace to make the playoffs. And that hasn't happened in nearly ten years. So that's very exciting. So big congratulations to our student athletes and coaches. So very busy, as always, here at the high school. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I would also add, Robert, that the high school just received the Dalton Award for last year, which means they had the highest percentage of winning for Division III out of any high school in Division III. And that hasn't happened in thirteen years. So-
It's been a while, yeah.
All sports, yeah.
Yeah.
If a flex does fill up, does a teacher have the ability to let additional students in?
They can, yeah. But remember, when we have flexes, we typically have, we, we have two in a day. So if flex A fills up, then oftentimes, students might just default to flex B.
Okay.
But yeah, they, the parents, our teachers can override, override numbers.
I was just gonna say, like, kind of the same thing, but you must have the numbers on how, like you said, roughly they're half full, right? So twelve out of twenty-four, I mean-
But keep in mind, some of those students aren't necessarily there to see the teacher. It might just be the advisory that they've stayed for. So a teacher doesn't, isn't necessarily working with twelve, thirteen, or fourteen students. Just some of the students in class might be students that are in their advisory, that are just there doing work.
Assigned to that, that's flex, yeah.
Oh, because-
Right, so these are different.
Assigned to a flex.
Correct.
Yeah.
But I guess what is the, I'd be curious of the numbers. And I know the answer for my son, but how many times has students flexed into a spot for extra help? I think that number would be important.
Yeah, we have that data as well. But yeah, if he's, if he decides to stay in his flex, say, it happens to be an English teacher, he will see students coming in to work with that English teacher.
Right.
But we still have to have a cap on a number, because we only have certain seats in a classroom. So we can't have, say, ten students stay in advisory and then twenty, twenty-five more come in for a flex. We wouldn't have room in the, in the advisory.
My question, just so I understand flex, it's basically like study hall. So you just sit in your, like, advisory class?
If you choose so, yeah.
You don't need extra help. It's like period C. You would just go to your advisory teacher and work on whatever you- advisory teacher and work on whatever you, you want to work on.
Yep, or you can see your guidance counselor, you can come here, there are different options throughout the buildings.
The library, exactly. So this is just like giving the kids who need, like, if you want to use that.
At the same time.
Exactly. So, so it seems like a majority of students are probably staying just in their advisory or coming here.
Correct.
And then there's like a percentage, like, that's what I would be interested in.
Yeah, and we don't...
Going to get extra help, yeah.
Yeah, and we don't do a lot, we intentionally do not schedule many things, if any at all during flex to preserve that. I know that the topic of captain's counsel or whatever came up. So over the course of a year, I think there's north of 320 or so flexes that we have throughout the year. We use three of those.
Thank you.
Or, yeah, to meet with captains. So I didn't want you to get a sense that, like, we have these other meetings and other kids have other responsibilities during that time.
That was a little nervous for a second, but um...
We don't even, just to let you know, we don't even schedule assemblies during flex. We have another flex that we've set aside, Flex A, on day one, where we will run some of our assemblies on that particular day, but we try to really not touch that flex time for students.
Flex A and a B aren't on the same day, those aren't different.
No, they're on the same day, but on day one, when we have flex, that's when we do our advisory.
Right.
So sometimes, those will be the days that we use for an assembly or something. We have some speaker come in.
Yeah, I think the, I think I would, and I think some of my colleagues might just want to, like, look at the, because the feedback we're getting, right, is around the extra help not being available at the start time. I think that's the biggest negative we're feeling from the town.
Right.
So I think, I'd like, I don't know if it's another presentation, Robert, or if some of us come mute with you, but just to, to look at this data a little bit more, because it's like, I understand how it works, I work in a high school, I get now, I didn't totally understand, but like, there's 12 kids in there, that's where they're assigned, like, how many are coming in there for extra help? Are kids able, like, we just got to cut through this a little bit to get the data, to understand if there are 12 more kids the day before they have an Algebra II test, right? Because I know how this is cyclical in all high schools, I'm sure everyone, you don't have to work in a high school to understand, like, before tests, math labs jammed up, or the teacher, whatever. So I think I would just like to, and however we do that, just come look at the numbers with you or Jeff, and just, just figure out what the real numbers here are, because, because it is a concern, losing extra help after school, and some of this is still a little murky to me. So I, I just, that would be a request, like, sometime in the next couple of weeks.
We could certainly do that. I mean, I think some of the things that we've been seeing is that, and it's okay, because their choice, but some kids choose not to get extra help during that time, they want to do something different.
Of course.
Right? So it's there for them, but they're choosing not to do it.
Right.
And then if they get home and they're not, they need help, and there's not staying after, well, you could have done it during flex, but they chose not to stay during flex. I mean, a lot of it's kind of executive functioning too, right? It's kind of getting the kids through what they, time management, executive functioning. I have this time to do it, but if I go and sit and look at my phone, because I haven't looked at it all day during that time instead of getting extra help, now when I go home, I'm up till 10 or 11 o'clock at night. So it's about choices too.
I totally agree, that's just why I'd like to look at, and you mentioned it, but I don't know that you have the numbers, but after-school at the district I work at is not super popular where I beg kids to go. So I, you said something, you don't have numbers on how many kids, like, went after-school last year, do you? And I don't really expect you to, I'm just, I'm trying to put data behind this, because like, uh...
I can tell you, before we moved to the schedule with flex.
Yeah.
So before, we had, you know, we didn't have studies, we didn't have a flex.
Sure.
After-school was almost like an eighth period. It was pretty busy.
It was, okay.
We saw a drastic change once we incorporated flex, because students were feeling like that's where they can get the extra support from, that's where they can meet with their teachers and do their work, so our, our numbers went down significantly.
Okay.
When we switched to that schedule.
I would say piggybacking off of that, because I agree, I would, I think it would be interesting to see kind of the flex data, but also, if you have it compared to last year, is there an uptick in flex? Is it the same? Is it down? Right? Like, I think that would be the interesting data point to see, like, you know, where, because I agree, there is like a murkiness, I think, for the, for the five of us to an extent, in regards to the amount of information we're getting from the community, and how to best parse that with actual facts, right?
Right, that's fair.
How do students determine their flex schedule? Is it, yeah, how do they, how do they get assigned to flex?
Either they can sign into a flex, or a teacher can assign a student. So if you're a classroom teacher and you want to see a couple of students, you can actually sign a student in too.
You'll schedule them for, is, so is there any conversation with their advisor about where, where I should go for flex?
So initially, when we designed the program, yeah, that would, the hope was that that would be part of sort of the conversations, that advisors would sit with students, and we say, you know, hey, we see you might be struggling here. And some of those conversations do happen, because some of our advisors are teachers of students, so they have more familiarity with the students. But there's still a lot of independence in terms of students being able to flex. Now, classroom teachers will, you know, reach out to students in class to say, I haven't seen you in flex, and start, begin to schedule students in, so typically, if a student needs to see a teacher, it might be driven more by the teacher saying, I'm going to schedule you in for flex on day two and day four, or whatever. But oftentimes, and maybe we see it more with some of our older students, they tend to flex themselves in knowing their schedules and what they need.
And is there any threshold for when a student needs to be scheduled for flex by a teacher?
Threshold meaning?
Like, meaning, make a grade, yeah, any sort of, like, this, we, we have flex at our school, right? There's like some thresholds of, you need to schedule them next week if this happens, so is there any threshold?
I don't think there's a written threshold as much as teachers have a good sense of when someone's struggling, that they're going to want to see them. And the nice part about MyFlexData, MyFlexLearning as well, is even when we're meeting with parents, we can show students, like, we've actually signed up for flex a couple of times, we want to see them more. So, you know, having that data is very helpful for us, and...
Can a teacher initiate on the MyFlex?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you would probably know, does that probably happen more than students initiating, or?
I think for, so for freshmen, I think because they just don't have the time management, like, they're functioning stuff down as much, I think there's probably more freshman teachers who flex a kid and say, like, we're going to sit and we're going to work on this, or there's four of you, we're going to work on this together, or whatever. Our freshmen, the way we have freshman advisory set up, all the teachers have access to how every, all their 14 students are doing. Their current averages are available for those 14 teachers, so they can see, oh, oh, okay, this one really should be going to see his math teacher, because it looks like there's been a drop, you know, we weren't at a decent point. So they can keep track of that in addition to their, the school counselor. And then we have a couple of services set up during flex as well, so there's an academic success center for kids who need maybe a little more executive functioning support, so they can go and get help with that, or help clean out their flexes, they can go to counseling, they can go to the writing center. So there's a few places that we've kind of put in place to help with that transition into, you know, Ellery doesn't need any help figuring out where to go during, during flex, but...
We did notice that during Penn Night, it was very, and then we saw, thank you for ParentSquare again, by the way, because now it's all in one spot, you know, and looking for the eighth-grade dance contract, go to ParentSquare, looking for the, you know, whichever you need, so. So all of it working together, seems to be working really well, so thank you.
I was just going to add, I think for flex, last year, I would say, I, this year, I think every day one is when you can sign up for, like, a flex, for that entire schedule, for day one to eight. Every day one, I have my calendar, and I sign up for every single flex through that day, so they don't fill up. And I, most of the time, go to every flex that I possibly can for, say, if I have a math test or an English test.
Some days it's covered, some days my flex is taken up by college visits, if a school is coming for juniors and seniors, you can sign up for college visits. I would say, I usually, last year, probably stayed after-school for two to three days if I had a major test. I usually probably stayed for 45 minutes. I make a doc of every specific question that I have, so if the teachers can't get to that in flex, that's what I would use extra help for, but I do think managing your flex wisely is something that is important as well.
Any other questions?
Just to talk about the transition stuff a little bit, because we heard about that, and like, we, we just heard that the, the ninth-grade advisors have access to all 14 kids' grades. You know, if I have access, are they encouraged, coached to K-Pot? Like, so, you know, I understand you have access to it is, is different, that, so what, what programs, like, that sounds like a good thing, right, to have a, a non-teacher adult in the building who has eyes on the grades and is trying to help that kid? Are there other things that maybe we didn't hear about earlier with the eighth to ninth grade transition on, on your end?
Yeah, actually, I'm going to actually have Brendan Heather come up, they've done a lot of work with the ninth, eighth to ninth grade transition, you want to come up here? Over the, yeah, just to, yeah, over the past couple of years, it's, I mean, it's always been a focus for us, so.
Of course.
Over the past couple of years, we've actually met with the eighth and ninth, or the ninth-grade teachers, specifically on the transition, I know Brendan and Heather have done that a lot. We've done some stuff with the guidance counselors down at the middle school as well to help with the transition there. But just, you know, I think even the mention of the, the student agendas was something new that we thought we'd help with, you know, the freshmen coming in, but I know you've worked closely with the ninth-grade teachers, they meet with them regularly, maybe just talk about some of the initiatives that you've rolled out. We've redone our ninth-grade orientation as well, to sort of help with the transition, but...
Yeah, I know, it's, it's always a focus, and I think we even heard about, like, science teachers helping write emails, we've heard some stuff, so I just want to bring that up again, because that's something in the community, you know, we always hear about, so, I appreciate it.
So it is, I mean, it is something that Heather and I feel passionately about, and we, you know, kind of work a lot with the ninth-grade teachers. So we have voluntary meetings at 8:00 AM, and the room is full, so we identify goals every year, so things that have come up or come out of that, the agenda sounds like just an agenda, but it actually is customized to our schedule, so every, you know, it's, today's was today's schedule with a room for flex and, you know, whatever, the, all the holidays and stuff, so just, you know, the, the executive functioning things that get in the way, and, you know, we're trying to get those struggles out of the way as, as much as we can for the ninth graders. The orientation has evolved over the years, so we call it an extended orientation now, so it used to just be the first day of school. We have a lot of help from our senior ambassadors at student council, because I think Ellery was referring to, so they spend, they spend like an hour with them now, answering questions, but also kind of acclimating them to the things that are unwritten. But also, we do another, like, assembly for them, introducing them to the ASC, the writing center, the LMC, the peer tutoring. So, you know, every year, we kind of tweak that every summer, based on feedback from the kids and from the teachers.
So the orientation now lasts for the whole first cycle during flex, because they don't have as many places to go to. So during Flex A, so Flex A is 35 minutes, and Flex B is 35 minutes of a 70-minute period, just because I think that if you don't know our schedule, like, it totally makes sense to us, but it's a little confusing. So they're back-to-back, so if a kid were making up a test or whatever, but the, they, they would look at how to get oriented in MyFlexLearning. So we try and break down, I think we were just barraging kids with a lot of information that all made sense to us in the first day of orientation in the past, and we've tried to break it up into something that makes a little bit more sense, so that they're just focusing on MyFlexLearning on day two, they're just focusing on school culture pieces, so that it, you know, it just is making a little bit more sense. Things that we've talked about with the ninth-grade teachers are, like, looking at homework from across the whole building, so not how much does this department give versus how much does that department give, but what's the meaning of homework and, and why is it valuable, and what do we need to do to make sure that as we greet the students as, you know, coming in as former eighth graders, now they're ninth graders, what, what do they need to do to start ramping up to what the expectations might be in this building? So making sure we're, we're meeting them where they are, as opposed to, you know, I think what some of them feel, that there is a big transition from, you know, it's not far, but it's, it's a big transition.
And I think, I, I think there has to be a transition, right? Middle school is different than high school, like, it, it can't be the same, right? You're gonna, you're gonna see people struggle, I think, a little bit. One of the things I'd be interested in is, like, placement, like, one of the, the student who spoke, who said, like, kids are confused in their class, and I really, like, and I don't know the answer, and I don't know, like, right, this is probably a combination of eighth grade and ninth grade, like, we have three levels, and are we, are we placing people in the right levels? And I, and I realize, right, I'm a parent of two kids in this town, I know what this town's like, right? Like, we all have the smartest child. All our children are brilliant and amazing, and they, they are all going to go to Harvard, right? But like, is there ever switches made for students? Like, because I, I do, even my daughter in eighth grade, I hear it, like, everyone wanted to take the algebra, right? And like, you get the teacher recommendation, but your parent can place you in it too. And I do wonder if, you know, sometimes, like, a child's struggling because they're not in the right level, and do you, like, is that being taken into consideration, and is that something we need to think about more of? And Will's laughing, but...
No, sorry, I, I, yeah.
Like, that's what, like...
The term we use in Wellesley, and they are real.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, and I, and I feel bad, but...
We changed our English and our history entry level. We actually only have two.
Okay.
For ninth graders, we have a college level and we have an honors level.
Okay.
And I think some of that has helped.
Okay, because I, I do wonder if that's out of some of the, like, the...
Yeah, so I mean, again, we've been trying to look at this same puzzle from, I couldn't tell you how many different angles. You know, the overrides come through me, I get to meet all the students that are looking to do something different. I also work with all the students who are dropping classes at the beginning of the year.
So people, so, right, if you do have that mistake, you tend, like, right, you're in your first couple of weeks, and it's like, this was clearly, like, maybe a bad placement, and that's why you're struggling, we can move you to...
Yep. I, I mean, I think we all believe that a high school is a place where you, you learn, you grow, you might make mistakes, you pick it up, and you, you move on. So we want to make that a safe place, you know, this is a safe place, I think, to be able to do those things, hopefully. And again, we, we listen to the feedback, we meet with students on a fairly regular basis, you know, individually, but then as, as groups, they, you know, the, the students who met with Ellery, there were 30 of them, two from each flex, so that each group was, was representative, which was nice.
And something that did come up for them, you know, and it comes up, you know, every year, and I think that we're always trying to get better, is that, you know, they say that they need more study skills. So, you know, actually, we met with Nat last week, and we're trying to brainstorm some ways that the eighth and ninth-grade teachers could work together, and, you know, almost do some, like, vertical work on that, you know, hopes that they, you know, even using the same language would be nice. So we've talked about maybe setting up some meetings for them together, which actually the ninth-grade teachers were wanting.
Were very interested.
And wanting to do, so. Anyway, we're working on it, it's very important to us, trying to get better every year, but, you know, we always welcome the feedback, always from the kids, so.
And I think the other thing to remember is, with the transition, it is not only the school day is different, but their after-school.
Yeah.
Right, so you, you know, you take a, I think with 90, 92, 91% of our students play a sport, right? Well, if you play Little League baseball or whatever, that's like two practices a week, and then maybe a game on Saturday. And all of a sudden, you go to high school, and it's sort of a six-day-a-week commitment. So it's not only the jump and the different classes that they're taking, but their afternoons look very, very different now.
Yeah, their whole life, like, changes.
Right, so it's the time management that gets layered on top of new classes and a new building and new adults that makes this transition. Again, I don't know that it's any different here than any other high school around, because when I meet with my job-alike principals, we all talk about the same sort of things, you jump from middle school to high school, but there's just a lot more on students. When you're in high school, there, you're not bus, any more busier than you are when you're in high school. Kids actually, when they come back from college, you're like, well, I have all kinds of time, because, you know, they're not playing sports often in college, and they don't have all in college and they don't have all these extra commitments. So it is these four years that are busy, not only during the school day, but, you know, after school as well.
Yeah. I would say along that same line, like what you're saying with like kids taking the classes, their correct classes, like I'm just gonna say this because I have a microphone and people want me to be here. But like middle school is, like our expectations of our community and our kids change a lot. To Diane's point about the competitiveness, when our kids are hanging out in eighth grade, I think we're hanging out in eighth grade. And as soon as our kids go to ninth grade, our kids are thinking about, Diane said Harvard, so I'll say that, but like.
Right, that's just.
Like, so I just want to name that. I appreciate what you guys are doing. I think we are getting better every year. I just, I want to make sure we continue to get better every year. But I think it is a community thing and not just parents and not just kids, but both of them. Where if we get a three or a four in eighth grade, we're cool. If we get a B plus or a C plus or whatever in ninth grade, all of a sudden I might not be able to go Harvard.
Right.
So I just want to name that because that's, all districts in Metro West, high performing districts have this issue. I do think we are attacking it and trying to get better. So I appreciate you guys for that. It's hard, it's real, but in our mindset changes. Like if we look at ourselves and our kids, like in eighth grade, if I get a three or a four, either way, I'm going to practice happy. And in ninth grade, when that kid gets a grade they don't expect, it is a big deal for that kid. And there's nothing we can do in the school. There are some things we're gonna do in the schools, but at home, we can change that expectation a lot. So I just want to name that because I appreciate what you guys are doing. I know it's hard with all of your job alike people. That's how you say it, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Practice in middle school, it's real in high school.
Yeah, I agree. I just feel like the.
How much time do you have? I'm ready. Here we go. I've added a few notes, Dr. Marsden.
Perfect.
I think data would be helpful.
Yep, for sure.
All kidding aside, thanks for having me. And I will do my best. This is my shortest doc and I did not do that by shrinking the font. I've done that before. I did not add nine slides into one. But truly, we've had a really great start to the year. Really want to thank our community for the support. Our staff is amazing, our admin assistants in particular. I just want to give a shout out to Hannah Blanco, who has our, the lead administrative assistant. As you know, it was a personal and professional missing of Sharon because she has been the rock of our school forever and Hannah has just stepped in and been amazing. So that's been awesome. Our custodial staff and, you know, we're short staffed. Schools are short staffed everywhere. We've been short staffed custodian for Blake. We're fully staffed and we see a difference. It's great. They've been doing an awesome job. Enrollment, we have seven fewer students than last year. We have five seventy-one right now, one hundred and ninety-seven and six. Seventh and eighth is one eighty-seven. And that decline is not unique. We actually have fewer students attending private school during these years than we have the past few years. We did have that unique year from eighth to ninth, a couple of years where we're thirty-two kids. That was such an anomaly from eighth to ninth. We typically see some attrition from sixth to seventh because a lot of independent schools start in seventh grade. That has been. And we actually have a number of students this year that are returning from independent school or homeschooling and joining the community, other than seventh grade and sixth grade. And, you know, not making much of that, it's just we haven't had that in the past, who have been Medfield residents. We have eight new students as of this week at Blake, two, four, two by six, seventh and eighth grade, new two. And those are new to the school or new to the district or returning to the district as well. And we have fourteen new Blake staff members and that includes some kind of reconfigurations from roles. Facility updates, a lot of work was done on flooring throughout. We have a new cafeteria floor. Interior cameras have been updated. The gym floor was refinished. Library media center was updated with new furniture and paint, thanks to the MCPE on PTO as well. And again, a shout out to Kirsten, Diane, and now Louise in the library. They just do such a nice job making inviting space. Parking lot and driveway been repaved, security systems updated and our PA system was updated throughout the building as well. In addition to that, I want to thank the environmental committee in Medfield who donated an additional water filling station for our cafeteria, which is awesome because those are very expensive and that has helped our travelers during lunch. That say they need to go get a water and they'll walk five laps of the building. So now, nope, it's right here. So that's great. The, with the new schedule and start times, I will say it's rocked everyone. And I mean that personally, like me adjusting my start time from twenty-eight years in a row, it's just like, holy cow. And I think a lot of it is, change is hard. I push change a lot. It's hard. And so I think it's very, there's been a lot of quick, and I will say myself, including quick judgment. We're like, let's breathe and live through it. On top of it, I'm thrilled that working with Heather and Jason Bealik, music department chair really has a scheduling mind as well and like worked a lot to. It is an art and Heather is a champ at understanding shared staff and scheduling and all that because we do have shared staff all across the district to align schedules and try to get a schedule that's good for middle school, good for high school, good for elementary. It's really hard to get all three. If we had a full, unique staff, we would do something different, you know, and that's just the reality. But we were able to, we have not in a number of years been able to rotate any of our periods at all. So kids had math first period every day. And it's not great for teachers, nor is it great for kids. With the shared staff, what we're able to do is jumble the morning periods and the afternoon periods. So we have no idea what time it is during the day. We have no idea what period. Kids ask me, I have to take out my phone. Like we're all thrown off, but that's been an adjustment. But that has been a huge difference for kids. Also in seventh grade in particular, their two related arts periods used to be before lunch. Now they have one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Far better for kids. So that's been an enormous piece. And able to keep our advisory structure, which is, I think, a real heart of our school. Most members of my job alike do not have advisory every day. And it is so hard to get into a schedule. It is really hard to find that time and we've been using it well. So that's a piece. I will say it's had an impact on intramurals, which we knew it would. Both from a staffing perspective, staff that have young kids or their own lives. And truly, we were able to offer a good number of offerings. Kids are busy. You know, a lot of the kids are reporting three thirty starts, four o'clock starts. So that's just a change. We do have the late bus. We still have extra help. It is a change that we're doing one day of extra help required each week. Some teachers can offer more, but they have to do one. And, you know, we have received some feedback about asking about morning help. That's the thing we've, you know, we've talked about with Dr. Marsden in high school as well. That brings in some equity issues too. Not all kids can attend. The buses, you know, on time, even if they're on time, they may not be. That's just a factor. But overall, you know, we have not done any formal asking of kids. You get the mixed bag. Some kids, no, no difference. Some kids, oh, my older brother said it was better before, you know, all that. And I can talk about like the homework stuff. I really do want to share some data we collected a little bit later. I did share with Jeff, I texted him, I said, I have not heard this in a while. Eighth graders the other day told me eighth grade is incredibly harder than seventh grader and we have more work. I was like, what? I have not heard that in a while. I texted Jeff and he said, did you change the teachers or something? And I was just joking, but it's just interesting. But it speaks to the data we want to collect. Robert shares some attendance data. This is just a very small sample for the last three years of the number of tardies from the first day of school through October twenty-first. Twenty twenty-three, there were four hundred thirty-seven. Twenty twenty-four, four thirty-two. This year, four thirteen. You know, it's not a huge change. We'll see. You know, my guess, and no disrespect for some of these students, we could start school at twelve and they'd be tardy. I mean, there's just some factors that are that, and that's not a judgmental state. That's just a reality. One nice thing too about the rotating periods is sometimes students and families have in their mind of the related first period is no worries if they're late. That's not true every day now. So it's the same thing.
I think I've heard that from other families and I see it myself. I do appreciate the rotating schedule because there are.
Right, if you are always tardy, then you are always tardy on the same.
One hundred percent.
Or if you have to schedule your ortho appointment.
Absolutely. And that, we've actually seen an increase in number of dismissals just because of the ortho appointments. And some of that too, they had made appointments before, a year out, we have to do. So I think there's a lot of adjustments that we're all making in that way. So that's with the attendance. This year's specific work, we're looking at our themes of exploration. Also just a broad scope as a district, we're really taking a lot of time to think about artificial intelligence. It is forcing us, I think, in a lot of good ways to change some things and it's like, what do we do? And that is a huge factor. That gets into homework. It gets into all the conversations, which is an enormous impact on curricula. And I'm really glad we're talking a lot about it because a lot of my colleagues in other schools, they're not talking about it. And we don't know what to do. I mean, that's just being honest, but I'm glad we're talking about it and the impact. And a big piece that we're talking about is we need to be teaching kids how to use it because they're using it. I mean, anecdote, the kids are, our sixth graders are using it. Parents at site council say they're fourth graders. They're helping their kids do the homework by using ChatGPT. They're doing that. So we'll be remiss and again, we need to educate in that regard. So that's a big picture. Priority is always at our school and I think within the district is well-being and emotional well-being. The statistics are clear. I just read some data today. Thirty-seven percent of adolescents are depressed. So to put some numbers on that, that's close to forty percent. Two fifths of our school, we're talking about two hundred and forty students at Blake Middle School are depressed. So I will say this over and over, everything we do is around a safe learning environment. Adolescence is a tricky age and no, I've never met anyone that wants to repeat it. And I say that sincerely about, that's why it is our priority. It does factor into some of our curricular decisions with homework and factors in that regard. The phone, one thing we did change this year with our procedures was no smart watches. Because what for, and it, the kids, it's been great. I mean, in general, yeah, is there a kid sometimes texting? We find it. We address it. And being very intentional about AirPods, you know, kids will actually do their hair over or wear a winter hat during the day and do all that. I get it. But I think with the mobile devices and we're using that term all the time because kids find the loophole. They were finding Fitbits with texting, you know? And it's a big piece. We've talked about parent night, please don't text your kid during the day. That puts them in a tough position. And also I don't blame the parents. Sometimes they think, well, they can check it at two ten. That, that's a piece that we're talking about it. But that, the other thing that we found is there are fewer sixth graders that have smartphones than a few years ago. And I think that's a lot of work that we've been doing. More have smart watches and I get why, because they want the access to be put on a more limited scale. So we've seen that. So that's part of it. The Wayfinder, SEL, K-12 structure, our R and D team was great. We worked a lot really closely, six to twelve and six to eight and nine to twelve. We did our first lesson last week and very positive feedback across all three grades. That's teachers and kids. Again, are there some kids that may not have loved it? We'll see. But, and we're taking a very measured approach because we know from past years, doing it every week, kids will burn out on SEL. So we're really, and again, the advisory structure has allowed us to build it into a structure that doesn't take away from classes. Regarding that data, we are administering Metro West two weeks from now. And again, families have an opt-out. That data that we're having, that we collect is really important. That does inform our curricular decisions as well. And it's one of our strengths as a district is the well-being. And that's very much in our middle school, I can speak to and I know as a district as well. And the data we're using, we incorporate it into our wellness classes. Tom Woods is teaching it and using that data right away to reflect back to kids. And also collaborating with Medfield Outreach. Also as far as well-being, our unified program is expanding. I told Jeff the other day that we're expanding to now and it's a really nice cohort of the districts around that they have like a text chain saying, hey, let's try kickball. Why not? So it's a really nice program that we can do throughout the year that we're building upon. The, I'll leave this piece last. Just a couple of things I want to highlight. We're really looking at different programs, thinking about how we can look at our special ed programming and, and working towards a variety of programming options to support students' needs, social, emotional versus executive functioning and really trying to tease out that we are staffing in that way. And thanks to your support, we were able to have an additional special educator, which really helps us program for what kids needs on the general ed end. Also looking at our multi-teacher systems of support. Michael Gao is our data point person for that in our Bridges program. And then looking at family engagement, Parent Square. It is the post universally, everyone's loving the posting. Teachers, families have given that. The messaging email is different. Teachers have shared, it just feels like I'm texting parents. Like they missed the formality of an email. It is different. And I think some families have kind of used it as a texting model. Like one of our teachers sent an email about just FYI on Friday. She got, it looked like the text response you'd get from a worried parent. Or, and it was like literally nine different messages within thirty minutes, like responding. Are you going to respond to me? Are you going to respond? I'm worried. And the teacher was like, I'm teaching, you know? But I think the accessibility, it's that. So some of that is, we're providing our teachers, just because you get a message now, you don't have to reply right away to make sure it's measured. So that's just an adaptation. And so we're working with that. And then we had conferences, day one today, tomorrow. It's been super positive feedback, very well attended. Math and English are the highest number of conferences without a doubt. And we still have, you know, it's a smaller number, but our art teachers have seven to ten conferences and for that, it's great. It allows the parents to kind of pick and choose what that looks like. And then just the Hail Field Trip went great, theaters going on, Pride Alliance, multicultural awareness club. We're trying to offer as much as we can for kids. And the other thing that I know, one of, I speak for you, Jeff, one of your highlights, we're having the veterans come for Veterans Day on November tenth for the luncheon, which is one of my favorite traditions of the year. So I just want to jump back a little bit and talk about the homework and transition, if that's okay. I don't want to take all the time. It's something that I will like say, we are, we work really closely together. I love the fact that our district and we have department chairs who are six, twelve, K-12 and we're a shared campus. And we have a very strong relationship and are, let's say texting all the time about this and meeting all about that. And I don't want to discount the reality that we have work to do. That said, this is a narrative of eighth to ninth or story that's going to be true forever. And I've shared this before, live in Holliston, all three times that my kids, three different kids, three years apart, were freshmen. Three of their four block teachers said, now they're getting real grades. Now they're getting real expectations. Middle school in Holliston does not do standards-based reporting. They give traditional grades. So I think that's just sort of, there is that feel of that. And that's not say against high school. Eighth grade says ninth grade is a prison. Ninth grade says eighth grade is a camp. That's a reality that is, they just want to name that. And that's not good nor bad. It's just a reality of transition. So we've been collecting data for the last three years, particularly around homework. Three times a year, doing three, three weeks in a row to get averages. So I just want to share the most recent data from last year over a three-week period. And fully respect Ellery, her data does not align with the data we collected. So over a three-week average a year, a year ago in December, grade six, students reported fifty minutes of homework, grade seven, fifty-nine minutes of homework, grade eight, fifty-six minutes of homework. So that's all within an hour. Now, yep, is that a little bit of a dip to seventh, up like from seventh to eighth? Yes, again, anecdotally. And our colleagues talk about this all the time. Is your seventh grade a doctoral program too? Like we joke about that, like there's a leap from sixth to seventh, seventh to eighth, there's a decrease. I think there's a lot of factors in that and I think it could be some teacher expectations, a lot of curricular work for us to look at. A factor that I think has really changed some things the last few years was the eighth grade went from their curriculum to civics. Civics is a very relevant subject. Kids are very engaged. It's a different kind of homework than ancient civilization. Seventh grade ancient civilization, very few of our students come in with background knowledge. And not, there are some kids, maybe the Renaissance kids for the prom, who are like, I love ancient Civ. I'm excited. Civics, every day there's something to talk about. And I think that is a real factor. And we've talked about like eighth to ninth grade. I think you said kids reported that, right? And I think that, that is one-fourth of the subject factor. So that's data we looked at. I also think it's really important when we look at the data, who are we hearing that reports from? When we take all the kids into account, there are a number of students that are reporting in sixth grade that are doing two hours of homework a night. Three parents this morning when they came in for conference grabbed me aside and said, my kid's getting killed in sixth grade. I said, how much time? Two hours. So I think we have to factor that in. Like when we're looking at the data, we do intentionally have heterogeneously grouped classes. I think, I know that's right for middle school. It really is because we don't want to track kids. It is a challenge to differentiate and give homework amounts in different ways. Some kids, and this is middle school too, they'll do homework in five minutes. Should they have taken twenty-five minutes? You betcha. Reality. I think that's the thing. We also asked the teachers how much they anticipate the homework takes and the students. So comparisons, grade six teachers said it should take about average of forty-six. Kids report fifty. Grade seven, this was interesting, they said it should take seventy, kids fifty-nine, right? Eighth grade, fifty minutes, fifty-six. In general though, the typical thing, the teachers underestimate how long it should take. So teachers often are like, oh, it takes about forty minutes. It's probably more. The recent data, we just started collecting eighth grade, and this also does not count music ensemble practice. At the middle school, kids only have music ensembles three times a week. They have to practice more outside. Here, it's every day. That is a change of structure. I don't think kids count music ensemble as homework time. And even our teachers, when they report, I didn't give homework, but then I was like, well, do you ask them to practice? Yeah, about fifteen, twenty minutes a night. So that data, kids don't count that. And I'm not trying to say excuses, but that's a reality. Our grade eight, over the last, last week's homework, the average for one cluster in eighth grade from kids, an hour of homework, fifty-eight minutes of homework. Another cluster, thirty-two, forty-four, fifty-five minutes of homework a night. And the third cluster, sixteen, thirty-five, forty-seven, fifty-four minutes a night. So that's student reporting, how much time they spend. That's only on math, science, English, social studies. So I think those are the conversations. I'm, study skills is a real tangible one that we want to talk about. So again, that's just the data we're looking at to collect. One other piece of data I think is interesting, when you look at the median homework and the mode. The mode, so the most common amount of homework across the school last year over a three-week period was eighty minutes. Kids are reporting, which speaks to, it's the range. The average was eighty-one minutes. The median, I'm sorry, the median was seventy-five and the mode is eighty. So we're taking all kids into account. We do have some zeros. We also have some seventy-fives, you know? And so I think that's that factor. It's a challenge. So I could talk forever, as you know, but.
This is all interesting.
Okay. And I'll also say one piece, we do have different systems of feedback. We do. And I think part of the thing we talk about is trying to look at consistency around retakes. That can factor in. That can factor in how, what the practices are. And I think that gets at the study skills, what our expectations are. So I'm sorry.
That was, that's sort of a question I have, I guess.
Yeah.
So I think part of it that I heard from the students was homework. And then the other part I heard, which like in homework, sure, like, I mean, it's sort of different kids are gonna sort of take it more seriously than, than others. But like, the other piece I heard was that kids don't feel, feel like they're struggling to understand the content. And then I, I also heard a comment about like, it depends on which cluster you're in. So I'm just curious, and I don't, I don't expect to have an answer for that right now, but I, I guess I'm just curious about like what the systems are that sort of look at, the alignment of expectations amongst the clusters and like the rigor and how that's measured in terms of students meeting those expectations.
So a few things. One is those three numbers I gave were all of the three different clusters.
Yes.
So that's when, I, I do think, yeah, homework expectations, most people that I find, we talk to students and families, they equate rigor with the amount of work.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Yeah, no, I get that.
I was going to ask you, like, what do you, what do people mean by rigor? Because I think that's an important thing. So that is a very consistent thing. At the middle school, it is an expensive structure, as you know. We have a far easier way to align expectations for kids because we're aligning three math teachers versus nine to 11 in that grade. That is the thing. They're pretty tight. And I would say the consistency is, is more, I would say, like, science has an approach on homework. Social studies does. So really, the clusters shouldn't be a big difference. Is there some? Yeah, I think there is. But it really doesn't vary that much, again, around homework. We give common assessments across the board. And by common, we mean the same.
Yeah.
Yep. Because you get into what's the definition of common? I'll say Nat Vaughn's definition is the same. Not, oh, it's the same frameworks. Well, they better be. They're aligned. So I think that's, that's a factor. I also think the prepared and the content, I have a lot of questions for that student. What do they mean by that? Is, because I think that gets at the curricular alignment, which is really in, in the frameworks and standards. So I think, I'd want to hear more about what they're saying. And maybe you can share when they say that they don't feel prepared in the content. Science in eighth grade is not biology. It is all science. And that's sixth through eighth grade. That's the next generation science standards. Going to biology, that's a very, that's one aspect of it. Social studies, we're going from civics to a totally different subject. So I think that's where we get at study skills and the skills of learning. And yeah, we do have different feedback pieces. Homework does get reported. Kids don't look at that. They see, they may get a rarely on reporting the homework, that means they're not doing their homework. But they may say, should that be part of the grade? And that gets into the grading calculations. And it's a very complicated piece that we want to align with. Did I totally go tangential? Did I answer? Some? Will they both?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, it's, it's like an evolving, forever-looking process. So there's not really an answer.
100%. 100%. And I think that's, it's, you know, we've worked a lot with the department chairs, thinking the vertical, I think six through eight, five to six, eight to nine, all the above and what that looks like. And I do think the leveling in the different course load does vary for kids. You're, you're absolutely right, Will. Our data does show the number of students that are recommended, or, I'm sorry, recommended has not changed much. Placed or scheduled into Algebra I in eighth grade, we have four sections now. And again, I'd rather have four with better class sizes, but the number of overrides we've had is far more. And as a parent, I get it. I 100% get it. Because as much as we say it's flexible, you can give me that look, Will, but I'm telling you, yes, I have overrode my child and got, I got straight A's in that class. I'm not saying, and she's not a stellar student.
I agree with you, Will, though. I feel like it should be teacher.
I, I hear you. I will just, I'll ask, because here's the thing. As much as we say it's, you can move levels, it's hard. It's very hard to move up a level. It's easier. I'm not saying socially, emotionally to move down. That's just a reality. I don't know if you'd agree. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and it also could be the maturity level.
I'm saying also socially, emotionally.
It could be the maturity level at the engagement at that time, right? Like you said, they're evolving and their growth, and their pattern of thinking is evolving. And that seventh grade weren't ready to engage and eighth grade are, but they've been placed in that lower level.
I'm saying, I guess what I mean by the harder piece is scheduling, it can happen. I think there's a piece about there are different expectations and different levels for kids.
Right.
And the content. There just is.
Exactly.
And I think like, in particular, I'd say a subject like math, you are in a different track. If you take Algebra I and you take Math eight, you're in a different track. And I think from my perspective, why not try it? Eighth grade, it doesn't matter transcript-wise. I'm just saying, like, I, I totally understand that view. I'm not saying it's right for all. And honestly, sometimes we're wrong. You know, I think it's a born to look at our grade distribution. Not all students that appeal and override are doing poorly. That begs a lot of questions, too. So it's layered.
It's layered.
Push me, Will. Go ahead.
I'm good. No, I mean, yeah, no, I've said my two things earlier. I appreciate Ellery, as I said, I appreciate that the data crossed three clusters. And another thing Ellery said was that the, the point where like kids did, were never taught this or something like, she made, and, and again, just to name it for everyone, I always get confused on how much of my life and my job I'm supposed to, but like, we all talk to kids and they don't remember something we said the day before. So imagine a summer. So I, I really appreciate that. I, I know this about you, that these are data-driven decisions. So I, I appreciate the data because, and I appreciate the student perspective, but like, we just need both of those to do the best for our kids. So I appreciate.
Where's the gap? What is that? And really, let's try to quantify some of that. I also do think that kids do know, and this is, again, eighth grade teachers I've taught at the high school, they'll say eighth grade spring is harder than senior spring because they're immature. Kids start to know in eighth grade, this is the last time I don't have to, honestly, they, they're, they're, they're very attuned to the system. And that was before we had standards-based reporting. I mean, just, so I think there is that developmental piece. That said, there's some real concrete things we need to think about. Robert and I always talk about, it's our job to prepare, it's the high school's job to receive. Same thing, fifth to sixth grade. You know, we hear fifth grade teachers, well, wait till you get to the middle school, you're not going to be ready. I'm like, it's the land of lollipops, rainbows and unicorns. They're going to be okay. But I think that's that annual, you know, inner dialogue, so.
So much for his, his shortest one ever.
I know. Thank you.
My, my report was short.
Do you have anything else?
Happy to talk more, as you know.
No. Thank you very much, Nat.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I do agree, if we opened a Star and Glick office at the middle school, we'd have the tardies that go down.
Yeah. All right, moving on to policies, informational.
Sure. So in your materials, you have two policies, an informational policy IKF, which is the graduation requirements, and policy IKFE, which is the competency determination. So these are informational. So Madam Chair, I think we should probably look at, before the next meeting, having a subcommittee meeting, a policy subcommittee meeting to kind of go through it a little bit and, and see if there's any changes that, that, that they want to make prior to the November 6 meeting, because that'd be the first reading of the November 6 meeting. And these are the two policies that are required by the state and do by December 31st. So we would have the initial one now, the first reading in November, and then hopefully a vote in, in December. And then we would submit that to the, the state. But I, I will say that the graduation requirement draft that you have in front of you isn't much different than the one that's just currently in your handbook, currently in your, in your policy book. And I, the competency determination was based off of not only what we do here, but also MASC's template that they gave us and, and told us to kind of develop it on. So take a look at that. And then if you have any questions, please let, let either Diana or Leo know. And then we'll, we'll try to get together for a meeting before the next meeting.
Okay.
We could probably do it on Zoom if it, if it works for you guys.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on any of that? All right, on to summer project update.
So Michael and Robert here. Rob is our new director of facilities. Did a lot of work this summer with Michael to get these things done. So I know they're going to go through this as quickly as they can, but there's a lot of, thank you guys.
Thank you.
There's a lot of improvements that happened over the summer in the district to our facilities. So Michael, Rob, thanks.
I promise we're going to be quick because Rob has to go to bed. So I apologize.
No worries.
Pass your bedtime. All right. So Rob Quinn, our new facilities director, has been wonderful. Been with us now.
Almost a year next week.
Okay. And, and his team, which is Ben is our project manager. He's been doing a lot of our, putting together all of our bid specs and we're working with some of the vendors. And then Shane is our assistant facilities director, who has been helping out with the custodial side of it. So we have someone on the capital side and we have someone on the custodial side, which has been great for Rob, so he can focus on the bigger picture, which is our 20-year capital plan, which has been updated. And Rob is working to put together what that 20-year plan will look like for the next five years. You want to talk about quickly just some of those projects that we're looking at for next year?
Sure. So, so we're rolling into the capital season right now. What used to be a priority, remain a priority, are the roofs here. Renovations were done in the school district. Memorial was renovated in 97. The high school in Blake were renovated in 95 and 96, which makes the roofs 30-plus years old. They've all outlived their useful life. You'll see in these slides that we show you, some of the, the work that we've done on the roofs to just keep the buildings dry. But we need the support through capital to fund these projects. They're all at the point where they need to be replaced. So that's, that's what, that's our main capital look right now going forward. We're going to continue paving the, the roadways and parking lots with Wheelock coming next. And then the other big push is again, our HVAC equipment, for the most part, is all about 30 years old. Our controls are around 30 years old. We still have pneumatics throughout the buildings. So unfortunately, some of our equipment's quite archaic. We've been going through it all with the goal of making sure everything we do have now runs, but we're getting to the point where we need replacement. So it's, it's going to be a big capital push to, to get these buildings to the, to the standard that we would expect. Building envelopes, as you see in the slide, you'll see where, this work has all been ongoing. But like Brian, Michael said, over the next five years, we need to prioritize these, these pieces of equipment and not just kick it down the road, because we're to the point now where we cannot kick it any further. Interior improvements like flooring and so forth, again, you'll see in the slides. Sight lighting improvement at the field, the high school field and track complex, that needs to be a priority too going forward. We have those wooden poles that are beginning to fail. So there's a lot out there to do. I, I may sound a little negative right now, but there's also a lot of positives. We have a great staff. Everyone's pulling in the same direction. Great support from the town side and the school side. But I just don't want to see this slip. These things, like I said, the HVAC equipment and the roofs need to make, be, be a priority and continue to be a priority and not just forgotten. We'll see, we'll see some of the work in these slides.
So again, we want to thank the, the town and the community for supporting our capital projects. You know, about 10 to 12 years ago, the town was spending no dollars on capital or infrastructure. And now we're beginning to put the money that these buildings need into it. We're still behind schedule, but we're better off than we were 12 years ago when there was no structure for capital planning. And now we do have capital planning. So, so we're going to start with the high school. As you can see, we finished the paving project at the high school, which is, this is on year two of the paving project. And in the back, you'll see that we redid the tennis courts. You're going to see, I think it's maybe the next slide, that we also did the Metacomic tennis courts. Then that's on here because our tennis team uses those tennis courts. So we redid some of the flooring at the high school, five classrooms at the high school had new flooring. That's a project that we're going to continue to do for the next few years.
One year, one half.
Again, that renovation is over 30 years old. So wear and tear, we have to start moving forward with doing classrooms, flooring, hallway flooring, are all scheduled within our 20-year capital plan. Again, this is the other tennis courts that we talked about for, that our tennis team uses for competition and practices. At the Blake Middle School, we, we did the paving of the parking lot at the middle school, just like Rob said, next year, we're going to continue that project at Wheelock, which is needed. We also redid the flooring in the cafeteria at the middle school, a project that was well overdue. We did some ductless heating and cooling system. You guys probably know our split units that you see in your house. It's the same thing. So this was done at the middle school in room 204. This is what Rob was talking about, the, the multiple roof patchings. So this was done. This is probably a fix that's good for seven to 10 years. We are talking, as I should say, Rob is talking with a solar company that is working on a project that will present about a couple of months.
Yeah.
About a combination of combining a, a solar project with a new roof that we think the numbers should be coming out next week or the week after, that could save the, the community or the town lots of money in actually replacing that roof.
So let me jump on that real quick, Michael. So what the goal is, is obviously the, the roof has failed in multiple spots at Blake. That's literally like a tire patch. It's a huge patch on an area of the roof that had multiple leaks. And this was around Thanksgiving of last year. It's the second patch. It's been done in the last year and a half. Our goal is to find a company, and they're out there, and grants are out there, where we can offer our roof to put solar on it, which like Michael said, will reduce the cost to the town for the roof replacement. We've worked with multiple vendors. I had a conversation with utilities this week. We sent them some utility bills and with the goal to have a hard number that we can go out to bid for to replace the Blake roof. It's not a guarantee, but it's, it's a path we need, we're going to, you know, try to take.
And we're also working, we're going to work with MSBA for accelerated repair project. So if we can combine all three, timing-wise, we feel that we can get a roof for as cheap as possible. This is what Nat was talking about. This is the new water filling station that we put in. We repainted the LMC at the middle school. So that was all repainted this summer. The, the actual carpet was done the year before. At Dale Street, there's a lot of work done on Dale Street. So we had two offices and I believe a classroom got carpeting redone. The hallway was evaded, new flooring. And you're going to see in the next picture that we also painted the upstairs. So that was all redone. It looks brighter. It looks nicer. And then at Wheelock, we redid the floors in the bathrooms. If you recall, that was like that pretty ugly green in that, in those bathrooms.
Yeah. So what we've done there is do existing, original existing tile from 1968, I believe. And what we did is the tile was failing, the grout lines were failing. So we, we had an epoxy product put on the bathrooms, which it's much easier to clean if there's any spills or anything gets on the floor. It comes right up. It doesn't, it's not porous. It's much easier. It's much cleaner. I think we did 10 bathrooms this past summer.
First floor and second floor.
Yeah.
And this is the rooftop exhaust fans that were replaced at the Wheelock school. A lot of them weren't functioning at all. And now they're well-functioning. And then on this side of the building, we repaired eight window systems. So basically, they resealed all the windows and, and those bricks around the windows. That was tested. Once that passed, so there was no water entering the building from the outside, they went in and you're going to see, I think it's a picture after this one. Yeah, they, that the ceilings were all redone.
So what, what you see here is that, that's, that's modern controls for the HVAC. It's called DDC, Direct Digital Controls. We're phasing that throughout Wheelock and we're continuing to use that platform throughout the district so we can have one single platform, like I said, throughout the district. And what we did here is when you saw the exhaust fans that we put on, we also picked up the exhaust fans on the digital controls so we can remote in, we can schedule them. We also picked up the boilers and the pumps and some associated equipment in the gymnasiums. And like, the problem, not the problem, but the reality is, the budgets only support phasing. So we're going to have to, we do all these projects in phases. So this summer, this coming summer, you'll see another phase, another phase, until we can accomplish everything. So we'll be busy for a while.
This is the ceilings we were talking about that were all redone. And then at the Memorial School, the big project was the canopy installation at the parking lot. We, that's going to be going live soon, you know? And the goal will be that that will cover the cost of that building. Right now, we have solar panels at the middle school. Right now, we have solar panels at the middle school, and we are seeing the return in investments on, on that project. On this?
So they just, they did a tie-in on, excuse me, what was the holiday on the 13th? I don't know which one it was. We had a holiday? Columbus Day, all right. So. What's that? Okay. So they, they came out, that when the building was unoccupied, and we tied into the building. So it's all tied in now. Yesterday, they did their as-built inspections, and tomorrow, there's a final inspection. And then the town has to do another electrical inspection. And once we sign off, grid's pushing to get this online. They've already reached out, so.
Yeah.
We're ready to go once we get these final inspections.
Our utility company is waiting on the town.
I mean, I feel like from a town perspective, this is something I would be like, you would think we would move quickly on, because it's like lost money.
I'll be honest with you, this project went really smooth. We didn't have any, any issues over the summer. I mean, I wasn't expecting to be completed to the point that it is. I mean, it's a pretty elaborate project. I, I can't say anything negative about the contract and the way it got done.
Like a power dash or some sort of dashboard that will have the reporting out that we can post?
It will be.
Yeah, so they were good, actually. And they were easy to work with. And then this is just interior, you know, window sill replacements that we had to do in six classrooms. And then we replaced a portion of the roof over the kitchen at the Memorial School.
So with, with that picture there, so this is what you can see. If you see in the background, you can see the old roof, and that's the new roof we went out to bid for, and we were able to get that section of the roof that had failed to the point that we were losing equipment in the kitchen. We couldn't wait any longer, so we had to go out to bid. I, I don't recall the exact number. I think it was 38, I think. But that's not the right way to, to repair roof patches here and there. I mean, it's not cost-effective, and you don't get the best product. So we're doing what we have to do to keep the buildings dry right now. Like I said, the administration supports this, but we need to talk to your friends in capital, let them know that these projects need to be accomplished.
And then interior improvements to the kitchen.
Yeah, once we had the roof replaced, we replaced all the light, and we changed the ceiling tiles out and got the place back to original condition.
And then for the district-wide projects, let's see. So we did a lot of fence line work this summer, so this was all overgrown, and we, we cut this all back. This was all done in-house. And there was a few schools, there was the, the Wheelock School, the middle school, the high school, all got, you know, the fence line trimming, and we brought everything back. You can see the, the train tracks in, in that picture. That was all overgrown, so that was all redone. That was actually before picture, and this one right here is an after picture, so it's, it's a big difference. And, and then we did some work in the courtyards at the middle school, and also at the, the Wheelock School. So these are just pictures of the courtyards. And again, sight, sightline work that we did on the fields. What you don't see here is the final project, which was completed last week, which was the softball field at the middle school, high school. So that project is about 95% complete. So that was done within a, about a three-week period, and thanks.
So you'll, you'll see it, the newsletter goes home tomorrow for central office, there's a picture of it, of the new baseball field there, so.
We, and, you know, it was a project that, between us, the town, the baseball, softball youth organization, and then some private donors, which helped get that project done. We're thankful for it, because it was in tough shape.
For sure.
Any questions? Thank you very much. In the interest of time, I'm gonna move the budget calendar vote to our November 6 meeting. I'm going to also move the mobile phone, social media task update to our next meeting. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Margston for an SBC update, MSBA update.
Sure. So I know in your materials, you have the MSBA data that they provided us in the enrollment meetings. So we had our first enrollment meeting in September, and at that point, I think we, we told you before that we had learned that, that MSBA wanted us to build a 445-student elementary school for grades four and five. When that was brought to the SBC, there were some concerns from members of the SBC, because if you look at some of the data, five to 10 years out, there's student numbers that are higher than 445. So the SBC asked me to contact MSBA and have another meeting and have a conversation to set up the same group that came in the original enrollment meeting into a second enrollment meeting, to see if MSBA would consider bringing that number a little bit higher, so that it would support whatever, whatever enrollment is projected for, you know, eight years, eight, 10, nine, 11, 12, et cetera. So I think that's what, we, we had that meeting, we scheduled that meeting. I thought MSBA was pretty open. I think in years past, they've been, just shut people down and say, this is kind of the number. If you want it, take it or leave it. I felt like they were, you know, taking some of the information that we gave them, especially around the COVID bubble of kids that's coming up to kindergarten next year. They were gonna take a, another look at that and look at their numbers, and then come back with the enrollment letter to me, which then I will send to the SBC and, and copy all of you as well. So they're, we're waiting to see what their number is and see if it comes back different than 445. I, I guess I'm anticipating maybe 460, 470, who knows? But they just seem very open to at least looking at the data again and making another assessment. So that's kind of how we left it. So I, I think one of the things that we thought was important is, where does, where does the committee stand on enrollment and whether they think, you know, that a 445 would be enough, or additional numbers might, you know, might help out the long-term plans for the school.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right. I'll move our community engagement communication to next time as well, unless anybody has anything very pressing. No? All right.
The budget calendar, because I don't think it was a big, there were a lot of discussion?
Did you guys have anything on that?
I reviewed it before.
Just so you don't have to kickstart a motion to approve the budget calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, all right, thank you.
Okay, great.
Sorry.
That's great, thanks.
Motion to adjourn, then?
Motion. All right, so a motion to adjourn?
Oh, you're, you're done, okay. You didn't want to do informational items?
No, I'm trying to, oh, sorry, yeah, you can talk about that. Sure, yep.
Okay. In the informational items, we have a few things in there. I just wanted to highlight the letter from Commissioner Martinez. He had sent the districts that received the notification that they had either met or surpassed the pre-COVID numbers in MCAS in grades three through eight. We were, as you know, one of those districts, and I attended that meeting, and he sent us a nice letter and a certificate as well. So they did say they were gonna redo, they were gonna have another group of people as they, they go through the high school scores. But we didn't know it was just three through eight.